And we are recording.
All right, do we have a quorum? Let's see. I think we have everyone except for trustee Baldoff. She's probably on her way. Let's see. Trustee Kuro, would you want to send Melissa a text just to make sure she remembers? Thanks, I'd like to call the committee of the whole to order at this time.
We just left another meeting, so she'll be here, I would assume, in seconds.
No problem.
She knows.
You guys were adjourned, I mean convened. Okay, great, we'll wait a minute. And trustee Stokbrand was having trouble with audio, so we'll manage that. I might need help with the chat.
I will handle the chat, President McCain.
Appreciate that, Clark Carroll. All right, I'm just giving a minute for trustee Stokbrand to get back on. And here's trustee Baldoff, thank you very much. All right.
Just a heads up, the meeting, the recording, it looks like it's paused now. But it said community and business relations at the top, so I just wanted, you know, I don't know if that makes a difference, but.
Oh, appreciated. Do we know how to fix that?
We stopped the recording for community and business relations and started a new one for the COW, so we should be okay.
Okay, great. All right, I will call the committee of the whole to order again at 6:33 PM. All trustees are present, and trustee Stokbrand is trying to log on again to clear up her audio issues. We have two items on the agenda this evening. They are to provide an overview of the 2024 budget and to recap the 2024-2033 long-range plan debt projections. So I will turn it over to Finance Director Johnson and Manager Ewald. I guess Manager Ewald is sharing screen, and Director Johnson is doing the narrative for this?
Correct.
All right.
Correct, correct, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
All right, got our budget review.
Okay, and I'm not seeing the screen share.
Thank you for letting me know that, I thought I had it up. Do you see it now?
Yes, it's back.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, we can page down to the transmittal letter page. All right, we can start here. All right, transmittal letter just states that we are here gathered to do what's in the best interest of here at Shorewood Financially for the Village. Keynote will be in the last paragraph where it says, "In recognition for the commitment of the long-term financial stability of the Village of Shorewood." These projections are factored in a 10% overall budget instead of the 5%, as we stated in the LRP meeting, for debt stabilization. You can scroll down. We can stop here for just a second, so there'll be a few charts like this. You'll see the adopted budget section column. It's just really a placeholder, I just wanted to state that. And we can keep scrolling from there. All right, our tax levy trends, these two charts here, one on our left shows our history over the last 10 years, and our chart here on the right shows our percentage change for the levy. Our 2.6% is the current year, our 4.04% was last year's. We can keep moving along. All right, keynotes for this page here would be, our net tax levy change for the general funds operation comes down to about 2.59% overall, which is about $225,000 for the year and change. Our debt service levy increase is going to be about $103,000 or about 5% or so from prior year. General capital projects, actually, we are trying to project here at a 10,000 or so decrease from prior year, or close to about 2%. Total overall proposed tax levy increase puts us at about $330,000 or 2.67% for 2024. I know our goal is about 2%, but based on what we have on our books at the moment, we're going to start off at about 2.6%. Next chart here should show the household impact for that change. If you look in the percentage increase column, we kind of just use round numbers for budgetary purposes. You'll see that we still use that standard for $340,000 home for 2024. You can see that percentage of change in dollar amount being roughly about a $60 change. And we can go to the next slide. The next slide kind of just gives you the math on it. It'll show you where we were at prior year based on that household price. You'll see it was about $8,450 bucks. And using that same household number based on a 2.67%, we are looking at about $8,515 roughly. That number can be affected by other things like an increase to the school district or county tax, increased levies, or how we move those figures around, but that just gives us a ballpark. And we can keep sliding. All right, these numbers on this slide just gives us a brief overview of what I stated earlier. And it's just stating the general fund made up about $225,000 of the $330,000 that we're looking for the tax levy increase. All right, this is just another chart here showing our projections and change over year. And keep sliding from that one. Another one will be two graphs, just breaking it out into percentages, giving you a better overview of those budgetary expenditures from a revenue standpoint as well. And here we're going to focus on the revenue portion first, and then below we're going to point out a few things that I wanted to make note of. The governmental revenue is going to see a slight decrease of about $15,000 due to expenditure restraint funding being decreased. Licenses and permits, we're projected to sell on-street parking permits are going to see an increase of about $10,000 or so, just based on the trends that we're seeing. And then court fines are looking like we're going to see another decrease here of about $10,000 in 2024, but we'll see an increase in parking fines projected, just based again on the current trends that we're seeing throughout 2023. All right, and then we'll see in the next few slides, a couple comparative, a couple comparative slides here, just giving us a budget overview from 2023 versus 2024. This will be our first one here, looking at general fund expenditures. We can go to the next one. The next one gives us a breakdown of salary and wages with a focus here on the police union contract. We budgeted for a 3% contract increase based on the COLA adjustment. So we kept that standard 3% pretty much throughout each department, just to give us a good start, to not have to play with the numbers too much. Public works as well, we use that same 3% based on the COLA adjustment. And then the rest just states the continued breakout of what we are budgeting for as far as full-time employees per department. And the next one would just be a chart there showing that out in form per department, what we have for FTE. And then here's another chart, just giving us a breakdown of 2023 versus 2024, stating what percentage fringe benefits will hold overall in our budget for general fund. And you'll see that we are budgeted for a 5% increase in health insurance premiums. You'll see that on the chart there. Retiree health cost is going to show a decrease in 2024. And other benefits include uniform costs, flexible benefits adjustments, educational reimbursement, and auto allowances. And we can go to the next slide. So our figures here, there's another comparative chart. I wanted to point out, our North Shore Fire Department number is not a solid number. We're still waiting to get the final number on that one, but that is just based on a projection that we got early on. And then there's a couple other departments that we took note of. You'll see Bayside Communications, we're budgeting for a 1.2 increase there. And we're estimating a Health Department decrease of about 12.4%. And we'll have some follow-up detail on that one in our next meeting. Next chart here gives us a few percentages here based on a few different departments. So you'll see we have an increase for disposal costs of about 4.7%. You'll see that crossing guards contracts are up 22%. We'll see that software maintenance included for police technology is up roughly 10% and 20% in other categories. And these two charts here are pretty straightforward about our personal fees and what percentage of change we've seen from year over year, from insurance as well. And then we'll see on our next chart as well, year over year for utility costs are changed here. Based on trends, we're looking to see a gas increase, gas energy increase about 7.1% compared to last year. And then on this page here, we just have some breakout of supply costs through a few different departments. Office supplies, we're going to see a decrease of about $5,000 there just based on, we have four departments who, all this year, their copier contracts are up. So we're going to go over to a new company, it's going to save us about $5,000 there out of the total departments. Maintenance, building maintenance for DPW, their standard contracts, you'll see the totals listed out there. Same for vehicle, you'll see a breakout there, you'll see an increase in fuel costs. Gas is increasing year over year as of now. And then you'll see a breakout there for other financing uses. And you'll see a number for $396,000 roughly for general fund reserves. And that number is there for the support of the debt stabilization for that tax levy increase of 10%. And the next one is revenue summary per department, year over year. We're looking at just some straightforward standard breakouts from 2023 changing to 2024. The red highlighted numbers are numbers that are estimates at the moment until we get some finals. And I think our transportation aid number comes out sometime in October. They're estimating, so we'll have a more fixed number possibly by our next meeting. And then our next one will be a summary of expenses. Those are the slides we have today, and we'll go into questions.
All right, thank you very much, Director Johnson. I'll open it up to questions now, keeping in mind that on October 2nd is the time when we go, when the department heads are present and we can go into more detail of department budgets. So I think keeping our questions to general related to the overview that we've received this evening would be the best use of our time. So with that, are there questions from the trustees? Is that a no, or am I frozen?
I don't have any questions at this time. You're not frozen.
Okay, thank you for that confirmation.
No questions here either, thank you.
If I could ask one question, just to help me understand, Director Johnson. Early on in the presentation, you mentioned we're changing the debt service from 5% to 10%. Is that mostly just in anticipation of that we've taken on more debt? We're going to have more payments, interest rates have gone up. Is that just to help protect kind of this future debt repayment that we're looking at?
Yes, that change from 5% to 10% is just that minimum number based on the projects that we have in front of us that look like priority, that some stuff that's going to look like in the immediate future here. That 10% is just there to support us, to make sure we're financially covered. Anything under that 10% would kind of leave us in a, too much in the red, where I'll be a little worried to place us there.
So 5% that we've done in the past basically is not sustainable for the future?
Not with the projects we have in front of us. Depending on if we cut out or push some stuff out, we may can go back down. But based on what we have in front of us, we will want to use that 10%.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Just one follow-up on the debt stabilization. The Village was never anticipating that for the course of its future it would continue to have stabilization funds. That was something that was done at the time because there was excess in fund balance that could be used in order to subsidize or be utilized for debt over a period of years. So as you see that dip off, know that it's not that anyone wasn't planning for stabilization. It's stabilization as a, it was a benefit that we enjoyed for a period of time.
Okay, so now we want to kind of build that back up again to continue to enjoy that as these project bills come due, basically?
Well, it would take several years to build a substantial fund, which is what we had before, and chose to utilize, made a fiscal decision to utilize, to subsidize debt over a period of years. So as that dwindles down, we're going to see that deplete, and then we're going to need to assume those full debt payments moving forward.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, I had a couple of questions, but I submitted them via email earlier and received those questions. Yes, trustee Stokbrand? You're still on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks, okay, so President McCain, do you want to tell me, like, read what your questions were in the responses? Would it be helpful for the rest of us to know or not? I just throw that out.
It was the same question that trustee Lynn had, and then it was a clarification on a sentence related to fringe benefits that I think was just a typo, and then it was a question about the Health Department change, which we will cover in the Health Department budget.
Okay, I guess one clarification I would like regarding this 5% to 10% is that, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we doubled the amount that we're allowing ourselves to put towards debt stabilization. It's not like we're automatically saying we're going to put 10% of our budget every year into debt stabilization. Is that accurate? I mean, we could go, we could go 5.5%, we could go 6%, we could go 7%, but I'd like clarity on that, because I think the 5% to 10% is a limit. It's not what we've decided to do, or what does this budget call for? Does it call for 10%? Did we double it?
Short answer, based on how the budget is structured, yes, it will call for 10%.
Wow, so for every dollar we take in, we're taking 10% to pay for debt. Is that a fair comparison?
I'll be honest, I'm not super well-versed in the whole debt stabilization just yet, so I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay, so I guess my point here is, the more that we spend on debt stabilization, the less that we have for operations, the less that we have for wages, the less that we have for a 4480 North Lake Drive emergency, the less that we have for an HVAC disaster. And that's just one way of thinking about it. When you take on that much debt, I mean, my question is, I immediately think about our neighbors. I think about, the city of Milwaukee took on a lot of pension debt, and basically, you know, until they got some relief from the legislature this year, we're pretty hamstrung because of the commitments they made for payments into the future, and it really cut their operations. And my concern here, as I expressed at the Long Range Financial Plan Meeting, is that we are going to hamstring future boards with what they can do with the money they have. I would just be, sorry, I'm having trouble here. Can you still see me?
Yes.
Okay, I've done something, but never mind. I just, I would like to be, just be really aware of what we're, the situation we're leaving future boards in. I would not like to leave them in a situation where we've hamstrung them with all this debt instead of spacing it out and staggering some projects, and perhaps looking at when some debt was maturing. Could we start some new debt after that? That's one of my concerns. Looking at the proposal here, I know we have as a policy, the board policy is that we try to stick to a 2% change in the levy increase. That's sort of what our policy is, and so I guess I would like to start from that point. And I know the staff is starting from 2.6%, but policy is to start at 2%. I'm looking at page 10, and I see the Village portion of the tax bill on a $340,000 home. I'm not seeing the math add up there. I mean, if I take the 224 figure and I subtract the 223 figure, I get a $65 difference, not 61. Is my math wrong?
No, your math's not wrong. The spreadsheet does a little bit of rounding behind the scenes to where that number's not going to add up if you do a straightened calculator.
Okay, so it says 61, but is 65 accurate, or is we're rounding down to 61 from 65?
Perhaps if you have an answer for it, Director Johnson, that's fine, but if it's a, you know, something that needs to be calculated, it's okay to follow up.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I will have to redo the math on it to verify, because the spreadsheet does a bit of rounding.
Okay, and then I had a question on page 12. What does this mean for property tax bills? So it says, the second paragraph, with a home of $340,000 and a property tax rate increase of 2.67%, and it says this is what the bill will be, and it says, this is the annual per property tax amount before considering any changes due to the $303,333 tax levy mentioned earlier. Factor in that increase and you add an additional 64. And you'll, so I didn't understand what that means. So is instead of 61, is it like 1? Is it 125?
The exact math will have to be mapped out at a different time, but in short, the first portion is saying that, based on what we decide or don't decide to do, that exact $60 could shift one way or another.
But it could double? You could add an additional 64, so it could double? That's not rounding, you know what I'm saying?
Not double, not.
I think I'm missing something.
The 61 hit twice, if that's what you're asking. The 61 go in twice, that's just how I typed it, I could type it clearer, for sure.
So it's not 125?
No.
Okay. I think something that's really critical to point out on page 14. I think you talked about a, under revenue, intergovernmental. Is this where the shared revenue would come in? It shows a 33% increase. I mean, I think you pointed out there was some sort of decrease from expenditure restraint of $15,000, but to me, the signature thing here is not, you know, a $15,000 decrease in expenditure restraint, but rather the fact that, thank you state legislature, we finally got an extra $300,000 in shared revenue, which is absolutely huge for us. And I think everyone should be aware that this is a big number for our budget to get from the state. I mean, we've been waiting for this for years, and to see that number jump by 33% is absolutely wonderful. And to see that number jump by 33% is absolutely wonderful for us. I think it went from 250,000 to over $500,000. Is that?
I I was under the impression that the shared revenue funds wouldn't come online until 2025, but perhaps that was not correct.
Well, George and I were at the same conference, online conference, a couple of months ago. And I thought they said we'd get it in July of '24.
Yeah, the the conference we said and someone projected that we may see it in July of '24. That is correct.
And that's huge. And so, I mean, I think that's just a wonderful thing. Under intergovernmental on page 16, there's a mention of the decrease in expenditure restraint funding of 15,000. But the thing that is significant here and should be noted is we gained $300,000 in shared revenue. And so this is a great thing for the Village and the taxpayers, I hope.
And I agree.
Something else.
Yeah, thank you.
Something else that I was wanting to point out was when we get to page 21, other governments, the the North Shore Fire Department, I'm just wondering, when we pay for that new fire station and health department in Glendale, is that part of that number? We're helping pay off the bonds to Glendale?
I would have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, Manager Ewald, do those, does that borrowing go online in 2024 or 2025?
So we have in in the budget, you'll see under the operational component, the the operational costs for NSFD for their single multi-year capital budget for equipment, we also have in there. And then we also have a debt line item for NSFD, which falls on the debt schedule. So we account for some things in the operating budget and then the debt on in our debt schedule component. And you'll see that come up specifically under NSFD. They're actually going to be at one of our next meetings. So we'll be able to review those those calculations again with them.
Okay, thank you. And then so on page 25, I just wanted to to double, to confirm this then, to stabilize the debt service at 10% in 2020. We are, we're maxing out, we've doubled our debt stabilization amount to 10% of the budget, the the levy. And we're we're meeting that already this year, right? The 10%. Because actually, it appears that it would be about the same amount as what we got from the state. Anyway, I guess it's interesting to me. So the staff wages we have at 3%, but when I looked at the chart, I think it said 3.7%. So I'm a little confused. Salaries and wages on page eight are increasing 3.7%. But when I look at page 27, they're 3% baseline budget. Should those numbers be the same?
No, they wouldn't match.
They should match?
Should not.
Oh, they should not. So the percent increase, percent change from 23 to 24 on page eight, where it says salaries and wages 3.7, should not match up with page 27, staff wages increase? 3%?
Not to the exact percentage, no.
Okay, interesting. Okay, well, I look forward to hearing more. I think this is a real opportunity. We have the, you know, TID 1 closed. And a lot of people waited a long time to see the benefits of that closing on their tax bill. And we got this great thank you, shared revenue boost from the state. And I think it's it's a really, it's a meaningful time for us to be able to show residents that we're serious about affordable housing. Because we cannot affect the value of housing in the Village, but we can affect the tax rate. And if we want to diversify the Village and make affordable housing a priority, this is our time to do it. And I thank George for all of his work on this.
Thank you. And Kathy, if I could, if I could ask you a couple of those questions, if you could just type them in email form like we usually do and send them back, so I don't miss anything?
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Other questions? Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to be heard? All right, hearing none, we'll close this. Hi, Ms. Blackmore. Yeah, I see your hand. Is it for this item or for the next item?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just thought it was in general.
Okay.
I'll put my hand down.
Okay, then we'll close Agenda Item 1 and move on to Agenda Item 2, which is a review, a recap of the 2024-2033 Long Range Plan debt projections. Well, this was brought to us by request from Trustee Stokbrand. There is a memo in our packet that identifies a few of sort of the moving target factors, if you will. Manager Ewald and Director Johnson, how did you want to proceed with this item?
I'm going to kick us off. And then if there's additional questions with regards to the LRP, George is going to field those. But the purpose of of me talking tonight is really to kind of go over an overview that I provided you within the memo. So and just to kind of recap, annually, the Village provides debt service projections within the document of the Long Range Plan. So that's the exercise that we reviewed in July of this last year. You'll find those debt service projections located on page three. It's essentially the big chart, the first chart that you're going to see in the LRP. And that chart, an estimated debt service, those projections are made based upon the project schedule that the board approves at the back end of that document. So there's a schedule that lays out the work that the board has desired to do in 2024, moving all the way forward to 2033. So tho- those numbers, that's they, we provide estimates based upon where we are at this point in time. We funnel them by year. And this document is used for purposes of forecasting. So it's not meant to be an exact science because what we know is that at times, projects will change. When we talk about debt projections in 2019, that board made some very distinct policy decisions within this project management schedule. And they committed to pursuing the completion of CC Phase 1, which we are in construction of this year, Phase 2, which has been scheduled in 2024, and then Phase 3, which takes place in conjunction with the Lake Drive Reconstruction Project with WISTAT. So including in those projections, we also break them out by water, sewer, and then general fund expenditures. I think the biggest mover within the schedule that we have seen changes for, I'm going to transition a little bit to the memo and just a couple of updates that I called to your attention from the schedule that we reviewed in July, is that for purposes of of moving forward, we don't anticipate borrowing 2 million for purposes of acquiring a public works site and doing design on a new site because we have not made yet that policy decision. So for that line item in particular, you can almost, what you're going to see us do is work with you more in quarter one and quarter two, and then shift that item forward until we have a better idea and estimate in terms of timing and what that project will entail for the board. Another piece of new information that came in with a number that's not yet projected in the schedule was a change in design for the CC Phase 2 project. CC Phase 2 is scheduled to occur in year 2024. If you'll recall, a main portion of that is Downer Avenue reconstruction. Initially, when CC Phase 2 was designed, it accommodated to move around and not and not replace an existing water main that extends from the Downer meter pit running north. There is a main gas line running over that water main. And We Energies had not voiced the desire to move their gas line in order to accommodate for the replacement of the water main. They have since provided different direction in that they are looking to move the main gas line, which would then provide the Village the opportunity to replace that old water main in Downer Avenue, when we're replacing all of our other infrastructure components. So the Village, of course, has the right to say, no, we're not going to replace the old water main. It is decades old. It is the original water main in that location. When putting back the whole road, if something does happen, we'd be cutting into new road in order to do work on it. So cost projection on the replacement of just that main is one, a $1.2 million addition to the project. We then have a change with the Village Center HVAC. If you look in the project schedule within the LRP, you'll see that it was forecasted for replacement in 2028. And this year, we had significant issues during the summertime with our compressors as a part of that system. There are four compressors, two have failed completely. They have not been replaced because there's not funds budgeted to do so in this year. What that means is that the cooling occurring in Village Center isn't operating the way it should. So it's resulted in some of our peak warm times cancelling programming because of the the sweat that occurs on the the lower level of the floor causes conditions that aren't suitable for the public or could cause a slip hazard. And then higher than higher than normal working conditions for the people and the patrons who are within the building at that time. We've been operating off of two compressors. The remainder of the system is original from the renovation or complete reconstruction of that building in 2002. So many of the parts for the other aspects of this system are also they they aren't available anymore, so people don't make those parts given the age of the system. So an option that we provide and will be bringing forth to you within the scope of the 2024 budget is full replacement of the HVA system, HVAC system in Village Center. Should the board not decide to do that, you could elect to just replace the two compressors that are broken and for the estimated amount of 40,000. And then we would continue to plan for full replacement of the system in 2028. I wish I had a magic crystal ball to look into to say, what do we and, you know, how can we forecast and anticipate whether the rest of the system will survive to that extent as well? We don't know, so it it will be a question mark, which is why we're providing the option as well for full replacement. As we do, any questions on those three, three changes that I can field at this time?
Yes. So with the HVAC replacement versus replacing two compressors, correct me if I'm wrong. So basically, we, if we go the route of just replacing the two compressors that are not operable right now, there's a chance that we would have to reinvest that money in two years for a full replacement anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions so far? Okay, you can continue.
Okay. So in the Village Center HVAC, that was a new issue that arose this summer that was not anticipated. You will see that reflected as the single largest item within the capital budget as we move forward, which also then removed pavement markings on Capital Drive. These are, I just want to provide historical context. We decided a year or so ago to bite off remarking the same existing pavement markings on Capital Drive in two phases. One has already been completed, which is the stop bars and the sidewalk crosswalk markings, which were in the most disrepair at the time. The second phase of remarking what's existing in its current location would be the hash lines in the middle of the road, bike lanes, parking stall markers to kind of allow people to care about where to park, where not to park within the existing road roadway. So that expenditure was estimated at 200,000. In the budget, you're going to see that come out in the in the sheet as a priority, too. Because had it not been for the board wanting that restripped in this last year, Public Works, under their evaluation of the markings, would not have scheduled it in the 2024 budget. We initially had it scheduled in the 2024 capital budget and then swapped that out for HVAC, given the compressors had failed and the more we learn about how to to fix that system. So know that that 200 and 250,000, I would think of more as a placeholder. We've inserted the the project to be the Village Center HVAC, but should the board make a different determination at a future point in time in the budget process, then we would insert which project the board would prefer. An additional item that we just wanted to revisit was with regards to the September 5th Board Direction to Proceed with Pedestrian Improvement Study on Capital Drive at $50,000. We bring it to the attention because we've been informed by WISTAT that they believe that our suggestions that we brought forward to them are unlikely. So in the event that the board does not want to continue to proceed with that and reallocate that those funds for some other purchase, such as Capital Drive pavement markings, we would want to learn that from the board throughout the scope of our conversation with budget. We also have additional ARPA funds, which are available for use. And as Trustee Stokbrand keenly noted in our prior meeting, Monsanto Funds, which we had earmarked in capital reserves for purposes of site investigation on the Department of Public Works side. Then just to round out the the debt discussion as it relates to our enterprise funds or the parking sewer and water utilities, one of the things parking, the parking utility will still stay relatively stable. There's no debt impact on that utility. If you recall, we could actually absorb that this year within to the general fund. But as we talked with our auditors, we really wanted Director Johnson to have a full year working with the budget as is and then collaboratively collaboratively make decisions on how to dissolve the utility and fold that within to the general fund in the 2025 budget. In preparation for bringing you the sewer rate increase that was scheduled within the LRP this year, it was brought to our attention that our accounting software did not adjust our sewer rates to change from cubic feet to gallons. When those rates were modified, that metric was modified in January of this year. So historical context, sewer rates have always been scheduled every other year to increase at approximately 25%. When the full AMI system for water was brought on in January of this year, the PSC had requested, and they've been requesting most communities and advising people to begin billing by the gallon instead of cubic foot. Because as you can appreciate as property owners, the metric of a gallon is a little bit easier to understand than the cubic linear foot. So that change in metric was put into play in the water side, but it did not adjust on the sewer side. So we had a couple of billing periods throughout this year that did not capture the the rates that residents were charged. So people were not billed the full amount. So as we go in and recalibrate and look through the sewer utility, we're going to be recal- we're going to be recalculating what revenues we deem to anticipate based upon that glitch in the billing cycle and then may propose a larger percent increase as we move into the 2024 year to accommodate for the lost revenue that should have been billed and paid for by customers, but was not received in fiscal year 2023. So and at our next meeting on October 2nd, I'll be coming back to you with that information as well as then with the budgets for the sewer utility as in addition to the water utility. One of the distinct directions that the board provided within the scope of the Long Range Financial Plan that relates specifically to debt, which is why it's included in this memo, is that the board had requested that we have analysis performed on the utility to see what it would take from a debt perspective and utility rates in order to accomplish a change out of lead service lines, as now required, beginning in 2024 by the federal government. So as you know, 92% of our services and many of our lines here in Sherwood have lead. So as, from a debt perspective, we want to look at that and the rates and get the board's engagement as to whether you feel it's palatable to adjust and change out all of those within a 20-year timeframe or a 30-year timeframe. And that was previous direction that the board had provided. And so in the water utility budget, you're going to see dollars allocated to perform that analysis. It'll operate similar to how the Long Range Plan works with this right now, but having individuals with utility expertise becomes more important, because not all of the guidance for that regulation is yet available. It's still being created. We know that they're going to need to be replaced, but some of the specifics and how that transition occurs and what expectations will be have yet to be defined. So we really want to get someone who's working with that data with the village that kind of goes beyond our expertise. We've never seen this in the history of water utilities and replacement of lead, lateral line connections, so that we also have a PSC report that's reflective of the work that we're doing and in a fashion that meets PSC requirements. So I want to pause on that, on the energy and on the enterprise funds and see if there's any questions that you have relative to debt. Again, our debt projections based upon the project schedule that was approved in July is, is on Page 3 of that Long Range Financial Plan. Every year, we're going to come back to update that project schedule as well as the debt associated with each of those categories, whether that be general fund, water, and sewer. Parking utility will dissolve, so we'll no longer see that within the scope of that document as we move into 2025. But that's how we plan to make these projections. So as we talk about debt, you know, Trustees Stokbrand brings up very good points. You know, prior boards have made decisions to bring these projects online in the way that we see them unfold. So we can't continue to do projects of this magnitude and not expect for that to in, to increase our debt service, because we need to borrow for the improvements that need to be made. So essentially, should the board want to make different decisions, they would need to alter that schedule in a way that was palatable to the board. And, you know, the near future, we, we have a schedule. So if, you know, each project will come through, and then the board will be able to make those decisions in terms of how we proceed. Trustee Orndorfer.
I just want to, before, I just want to note that it's 7:24. So take this question, and then we'll figure out whether we're going to continue this or if we're going to take public comment and then come back to it in the scope of budget discussions. Trustee Orndorfer.
Yeah, just real quick, just jumping back to commentary around WISTAT's response to proposals for capital. Can you provide any more detail on that? What were things that they did not see as feasible? Was there any further discussion around that that might be useful to know?
This was actually the same commentary that was placed within the memo that was before you on September 5th. And I bring it up not because there, so to answer your question, Director, there has not been additional discussion. That discussion occurred in preparation for that memo and that, that came before the board on, on September 5th.
Yeah, thank you.
Whether the board elects to move forward with it as, as planned or not is truly a board decision. Really, from a business lens, when I bring that up into the discussion, it's really because I understand that the board has a number of things that they may want to accomplish. But there's not unlimited funds. So as you go into the budget discussion and reflect upon the capital budget items and what's being funded or not, I wanted to just kind of call out some of the knowns and some of the information that we've been provided so that you can be thinking of, you know, what, what is, is your priority? What would you like to see that do immediately in the next year as we move forward?
Thank you. So to be clear, there's no action that's required or needed tonight and that we can continue discussion in the, within the scope of the Budget and Finance Committee as we move forward, going through the departments and the capital plans, right? Or, correct?
Correct.
So what I'd like to do is take public comment at this time, because you guys have been waiting. And then I'm going to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn, and then be able to start the Village Board meeting. And then we will come back to these items. So, Dawn Blackmore, if you would like to speak and say your name and address, please, and then I'd like to hear your comments.
Yeah, Dawn Blackmore.
Two to three minutes, that would be great.
Sure. I think it'll be less. Dawn Blackmore, 4240 North Ardmore Avenue. I'm here primarily just to, to say thank you. I finally watched the September 5th meeting today. My interest is seeing Capital Drive be the safest it can be for all pedestrians, but especially our students. And I really appreciated the discussion that you had. I thought that the voting six to one for funding the engineering study was fantastic. And I just wanted to encourage you to think about keeping that in mind, where this has some really positive impact for funding this and collaborating with Wisconsin DOT that is going to be, you know, protecting public safety rippling into the future. And it's so impactful and it's so important, even though it is a small thing in comparison to the large budget that we have. It's really going to move the needle toward making some improvements in a changing landscape of what we've seen as really concerning dangers with driving and with speeds. And, you know, you are all being very proactive, and I just appreciate you so much. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and did you give your address?
I did, but I can't give it again.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, Katie, now I, I see you have your hand up, and I know you have spoken on this item in the past, so you have something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to say, sitting and listening to this meeting, and I fully recognize the difficulty of deciding what the priorities are with the budget. But I just want to echo Dawn and say that I do think pedestrian safety on Capital Drive is super important. Certainly for students, I'm a parent, like many of you, watch my daughter cross that road every morning. But also my work with the Elder Services Advisory Board, we hear again and again from older adults in the community and, and truly adults of all, people of all ages, that the walkability in Sherwood is one of the things that makes it such a great place to live. And Capital is a weak point right now, and I think has the opportunity potentially become a strength. So I just thank you all for keeping it in mind thus far, and I encourage you to do so as you move forward and make decisions.
Thank you. And did you give your address again?
Oh, I probably did not. I'm Katie Now, 1020 East Glendale Avenue.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, any other members of the public who would like to be heard on this matter? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to check in with the board. Are you, would you consider a motion to adjourn at this time and come back to these items in the course of our discussion around budget? And if so, please make a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Trustee Ursing, seconded by Trustee Baldoff. Any discussion?
I just have one clarifying question. I, I didn't realize that we were scheduled for a public comment on this piece. And just want to make sure, and just want to make sure that all of the comment that was captured here about the Capital Drive project is, I think, was probably, I mean, like, which is great, and thank you for the people who showed up to offer remarks. But I just want to make sure that's maybe more appropriately captured during the regular board meeting, so.
You'd prefer them to, you want them to stay and speak under citizens to be heard?
No, I mean, they don't have to stay. I just, I, just for, you know, how the meeting has been noticed, and I just want to make sure we're like capturing everything in the appropriate place. So that's all. I just wanted to flag that.
Okay, maybe in between, I'm not 100% clear if there's a request. But I duly noted. How about that?
Okay, great.
Trustee Stokbrand, discussion?
Thank you. I just, it does seem a little bit odd, because we voted to do something September 9th and we're being asked if we want to reconsider it tonight, but it's not on the agenda for reconsideration. And I guess my question is, in the meantime, does nothing happen?
So that's a good procedural question. So we did, we did take action and approved the Long Range Financial Plan as presented in August. And so if we want to, and that plan is, to my knowledge, I mean, it is updated every year. The memo this evening provided some options due to additional factors, fiscal factors that can impact the budget. So I do think that we are able to make that change.
No, I'm confused. We passed the Long Range Financial Plan in July, not in August. In September, on September 5th, we voted to approve the $50,000 study for WISTAT. And so I just have the impression that it's, it's not moving forward?
No, Trustee Stokbrand. We can clarify, however, we do have a motion on, just to, we have a motion to adjourn on the floor. And if we don't want to adjourn, then we can continue with this discussion. But if the motion is to adjourn, I would like to get more clarity on the procedural needs, because we aren't agended for action at this meeting anyway. So I guess I would like to ask the attorney, given that we have a motion on the floor to adjourn, would you recommend that we follow through with that? Or if we want to withdraw it?
I, I think there does need to be a decision either to move forward with the vote or to withdraw the motion before we move forward with anything else.
Thank you. Is there a wish to withdraw the motion? I am not hearing anywhere, as long as I'm not missing something. Why don't we take a vote on adjourning at this time? There is a motion by Trustee Ursing, seconded by Trustee Baldoff with an additional request to capture public comment from this meeting. All those in favor of adjourning at 7:35, say aye.
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 Uh, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, did anyone not vote? I'm comfortable with adjourning. Okay, so did everybody vote 5-2? Okay, because I can't see everybody on the screen, so. All right, we are adjourned at 7:35, and in the meantime, we will clarify procedural questions regarding the LRP and if we need to agenda a reconsideration.